Good evening, everyone. We're calling the meeting later at 7:12. Can we please rise to the plate?
... of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands on nation, under God, in the report, with liberty and justice for all.
For some of you, you might hear a voice, but I'm behind the voice, I'm over here. Okay, welcome meeting up to the public panel. Okay, we'll close public comment and have our special presentation this evening. Dr. Gottlieb will present the 2021-22 school budget.
I certainly want to just start by thanking Dr. Gottlieb for all his work. He has really been an amazing godsend here to us. We've worked here a few times before and you never know, he might be back. But, you know, he's been working very closely with Mr. David Lemick and myself, and certainly his staff. And so he took, I know that he's been in regular contact with Victoria McLaren and also, as needed, with Lisa Gillette. So he did take what we had and then finish the budget. As you're aware, the state did just adopt the budget, so we just got the aid runs this morning, so we were able to plug them in, and so we do have good news for you.
Hello?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, on the budget, the first slide is the proposed revenues. And you'll see that the proposed revenues, major difference is in New York State aid. The runs came out today, and if you look at the run for the Highland District, it appears that it shows $15,241,260. However, that includes $221,000, I'm sorry, $221,160 for Universal pre-kindergarten. That is budgeted in the federal fund, the special aid fund, not in the general fund, so it would not show up as a revenue to the general fund. So I've reduced the $15 million by that amount. However, I've had a number of discussions with the financial advisor, Bernard Donigan, with regard to building aid for the school district. And let me just kind of diverge for a second. The status of the building projects at the moment is you have four sub-projects for the $17 million project. That's the three schools plus the bus garage. We have received certificates of substantial completion for the elementary school and the middle school. And that material has been transmitted to Donigan, so he is preparing the final cost reports on those two projects. Over the short vacation that we had last week, the work in the bus garage was completely done, and the work in the auditorium is like 99.5% done. The issue right now is some kind of a lens. The original lens was ordered, it's incorrect. Pete was taking care of getting the new lens, it's been ordered. We expect it in momentarily. We've asked the architect to come in and do the final walkthrough. So I expect certificates of substantial completion on those two projects momentarily, which will then go through to get the final cost reports done. Now, on the $8 million project, you've got three subdivisions there. You've got the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school. The elementary school and the middle school aren't done. We have certificates of completion on, I believe, all or most of the contractors. So we're just waiting for the architect to give us this certificate of substantial completion, so that work will be begun. And all of those reports, the goal is to have them filed prior to June 30th, so that the aid will flow. The high school, I believe that there are three issues. There's the roof in the library, there is the canopy, and there is the signage. The roof, the material, we believe, has been ordered. I know Pete was led to believe that the material is in stock. I'll believe it when I see it. The canopy, the bids went out, I believe we're opening them on Monday next week, and the construction is planned for the first and second week of July. The signage, we're preparing bids or a bid document to go out, so hopefully that will be done very shortly. But in any case, we expect that work to be done and completed prior to the opening of school in September. By discussions with Donigan, if we can get that paperwork in in the late fall, the final cost report to the state, we'll be able to get to full aid for the 21-22 school year on all of those projects. The elementary school and middle school won't be a problem. So as a result, Donigan and I have had some discussions, we believe that the building aid figure that the state is showing does not totally reflect these other three projects. So I have put additional money in building aid. You see, they have it listed for $15 million, I'm sorry, they have it listed for... $1,426, and I bumped it up to around $1,000,500. I think it's going to be a bit more than that, but that's what I'm comfortable doing at the moment. The other figure that I changed was the pilot number, payment and rule of taxes. Because we have the issue with one company, I'm reluctant to put that in as a revenue at this point. My philosophy is to underestimate your revenues, overestimate your expenses. So that gives us, with the tax levy that Lisa had prepared using the tax cap, that gives us a revenue of $47,133,657. Okay, on the next slide, which is the appropriations, from what you were given by Lisa, I have made a few changes. In the BOSI's process, you have something called an initial service request. That includes cross-contracts with other BOSI's. When we get the initial figures from BOSI's, they're estimates as to what the other BOSI's are charging us. As we go through this budgetary process, we get firmer figures. So we have had some increases, a couple of decreases, so that appears primarily in general support and instruction, and it amounted to like $4,000 or $5,000. It wasn't much. I also added in $15,000, as you directed, for the high school graduation. I've also put away a sum of money that will be equal to the potential memorandum of understanding that you might be having. Okay? Okay? And then the employee benefits adjusted because of that potential salary decrease. And then debt service, I've reduced that. As we're approaching the $8 million, the bonding that, I think we're opening those on June the 2nd. The first-year payout will be less than what they could originally estimate, so I was able to reduce that number by about $100,000. Now, one of the things that's interesting there is they've run that out at a 3% estimate. Everything is running much lower than that right now. If we don't get into a sudden inflationary spiral in the next two months, I would expect that that 3% will be an overestimate, so you may have a little bit of wiggle room there. So basically, you've got a appropriation that's equal to the revenues, and we really have not had to impact the program at all. It's basically the program that you're administering to incentive. There is one other thing that I want to bring to your attention. If you read the printout that came out of the state for the budget, you'll see that there are two lines down at the bottom. One says CR, R, S, A, 90%, blah, 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 and there's $1,524,000 there. That is federal money that has to be spent by September of 2023. The next line, American Rescue Plan, is a figure of $3,7,522. That money has to be spent by September of 2024. Now, these will be grant programs, so the district will have to prepare a grant and submit those to the state end department. And I've shared that with Sarah, and there are some restrictions on how the money is spent. Let me just read a few statements to you. They're looking at learning loss grant. The learning loss grant directed by the district plan cannot be less than $700,000, which may not win $10 million. The district must spend 14.28%... 28.6% of this fund on after-school or extended-day activities, another 14.286% on summer enrichment, and the remainder activities to address learning loss. So I've talked to Sarah and I've talked to Victoria, they're both aware of that, and I think the wise thing is I have not included that in the budget, because this is going to be supplemental money, not supplanting money. And so I think what you want to do is figure out a way, over this multi-year period, of using that money wisely to impact the children and help them through the difficulties that we've had to realize here. So the next slide basically shows you that the revenue and the proposed appropriations balance out with a difference of zero. You have the calendar there. You must adopt the budget no later than the 19th of April, and then there's various advertising and what have you.
I want to go to the next slide. So this is, as a reminder to the board, so of all the great work that Dr. Gottlieb did, you know, this, you know, we not only maintain the programs that we have, we are adding in the items that the administrative cabinet gave to the board a few months ago. So it does include one full-time elementary teacher. That's really, that's not a new position, that's what that is replacing, the retirement that we have this year. We have one full-time secondary social studies teacher. This will be a shared position between the middle school and high school, and that will fill, you know, really the numbers that we have for both buildings.
And I thought this would be filling like...
Right, we eliminated a position last year, so this will be a shared position, so it will kind of fill that. Then you have, remember, we eliminated the health teacher for a year. We knew that that was going to be just a one-year fix. So this does include a full-time health/PE teacher, it's going to be mostly a health teacher that is at the high school, it's a high school requirement for health. It's a half-time speech teacher to fulfill the increased needs of, you know, students in that area. And then a full-time trainer, so that's the athletic trainer. So now the athletic trainer will be our own employee, it's not going to be someone that we're going to be contracting out. They'll be a full-time employee, so they'll be here every day, you know, not just with sports necessarily, they'll be working into health classes, PE classes, working with the nurses. So all of those new items are in this budget that have a balance, and really, in a sense, ready to go, depending on what the board's feelings.
At what level is the speech teacher?
That will be predominantly elementary school, but we have speech throughout the entire district, so my understanding is we'll probably be focused more at the elementary level because of these services. And this year, we have, we were not able to do some of the preventative work, I mean, really had to do all mandated services and weren't able to do some of the things we would usually do, like kindergarten, first grade for children, early intervention kind of stuff. So this will allow, take care of the mandated, and hopefully do some for other early generation of the response.
Just one other question, in terms of the signage project, I don't know, the signage project, what is that? I'm just not familiar with it.
Right, so we had some monies left over in this current project. So you can then use that money for similar or like projects. So if you recall, so the sign, the electronic sign that was placed here at the high school, I'm, you know, that is what was ordered, but we're not really overly thrilled with it. It does not, it's a little, you know, it doesn't have the capabilities that we were expecting it to have. So the plan is then, we have the infrastructures all in place, so we're going to take the sign that's at the high school, now the brand-new sign, we're going to reinstall that at the middle school, so they'll have an electronic sign, and then we'll have a more capable sign here at the high school installed and larger, a little bigger. And then in addition, we'll be putting a lighted sign that says, you know, Highland High School in the front of the building, right next to the entrance, because it's still, you know, the, another future project, we still need to kind of make the front of the high school, it's still a little unclear what door you go in. There's no kind of main entrance, so this will at least designate the main entrance. So that's the signage budget that we're talking about. So we've been discussing this with the Support Services Committee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is it on?
Okay, anyone? Is Sue there? I don't know if I can feel that.
It's on. Yep, it's on. I'm sorry, I, I'm not sure I really heard Heather's question, this might be repeat of the American Rescue Grant. Just so I can understand, the money, we have to write the grant, but the money will expire?
So there's two amounts, there's a total of $4.5 million. So this is grant money, the one-time grant money, some of it, a portion of it expires in September of '23, and the large amount, the $3 million expires in September of '24. So we'll be writing grants, you know, we'll all be working together, it'll be mostly, though, Sarah working with the principals and Victoria. So this will be for a lot of, we can expand a lot of the programs we kind of currently do and pay for. So, you know, we're starting, in a few weeks, we're starting that after-school bridge program we talked about. So that's something that we can sustain, so that in every building, every year, we can have an after-school enrichment program in each building. And we can also, we already do a summer program, but now we can expand our summer school, for lack of a better term, program, our summer enrichment programs, perhaps at multiple levels. It could also, I believe, be used for, though, you have to be careful when you're hiring people, because it's their grant-aided positions, but schools do do that. So I could see us also possibly increasing our AIS support with grant money, at least for a couple of years, so that we can kind of have that catch-up time with, for students, give them that support.
So will we just hit the ground running and start writing this tomorrow?
At this point, at this point in time, we don't have any firm guidelines from the state.
Oh.
This, this just came out last night.
Oh, so this is random.
This is random. But the, the interesting thing about this is unlike the CARES Act, which basically the state uses as an offset, this is a complete flow-through.
Yes, it is.
The state is not pulling anything off.
Yeah, they're not taking my money from somewhere else and giving us this.
Great, this is good news.
Yeah, we haven't even seen the application yet, or we don't even know how they want to structure it yet, but we're starting to talk about it.
Okay, very exciting.
When you say this has to be spent by 2023 or 2024, can you have, again, you probably have limited guidance, but can you have a plan in place to use that money for longer than that, as long as the amount doesn't exceed that?
I don't know. We, we don't, we just, we...
Thank you.
What I read to you is all we know at this point.
Hot off the press, great news.
Yes. I think that...
Just thinking about technology, we have sufficient technology we think about, what we went through this year and then potentially in the fall.
As far as a replacement, can I have time here?
Yeah, so there's anything that we...
I do believe that there is some of that in the, in the budget, in the technology department, I don't know how much, I didn't find out for them.
Like a replacement, looks like go for all of our, you know...
Student devices.
Yes, that's all it's about.
Yeah. Right, we're going to, usually it's around 25% of your fleet, so over a four-year period on year five.
Yeah, no, but your question was more on technology. But that, like, for devices, for staff, students, any cameras that ever, just thinking about where we're looking for this year, and then thinking about potentially what the law could look like, make sure that we're all set.
Yes, so we've been working with Mrs. Padash, and I know we've ordered a lot of things, and, you know, she has a plan laid out to continue to replace end-to-end.
We've already put in an order for this summer to start that off with this year.
Anyone else have any questions?
So again, we are looking at a proposed budget of $47,133,657, and that is a 2.47 tax cap, I believe that was. Yep. Yes.
Okay, we have the opportunity this evening to either adopt this budget, or if you still need more information, or you still want to digest it a little bit more, we can adopt. We'll have a special meeting next week. It has to be adopted by the 19th, our next scheduled meeting is the 21st of April, so if we don't adopt tonight, we'd have to have a special meeting pulled prior to the 19th, or on the 19th.
Mr. Barone, I feel confident in providing a motion to accept the budget as presented for the 21-22 school.
Do you have some of the rest of the board?
I agree with him. I just, can I ask one more question, Mr. Gottlieb?
Sure.
The building aid that you were talking about, what line is that on here? I was just trying to follow where it is under.
It's in...
Put it in the microphone.
Yeah.
Only because for our public, they want to know these answers.
Okay, it's contained within the New York State aid line.
Okay, okay, thank you.
The motion, is there a second?
A little second.
That's why it's critical that we get those final cost reports done on all our projects.
Right.
That's a major piece of this, that sometimes we fall behind and not close out a project completely, and not able to put those final cost reports together by the 30th of June of each year.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a critical piece, and then Support Service, for the most part, is trying to stay on top of that and move our design team and management team in that direction to try to finalize those projects, but there's always some bumps in the road. So our superintendent said this to me earlier, and I kind of agree with him, I mean, we're adopting a number tonight, within his budget, obviously, we've made changes throughout the year, we can still do that. So we are adopting a budget that we feel is within the means of the community, and I think with the additional items included in the budget this year, some of those areas that we desperately needed, you know, we needed that health and PE teacher at the high school, who we saw that last year, the deficiencies and the difficulty we had. Personal trainer is another item that we've had in the test, now we'll have a personal trainer that's far above our district from here on out, hopefully, and all the other areas, you know, we're going to replace the retirement teacher at the elementary school. So I think, I feel, and I concur with Mike, that I would say that this board is ready to adopt, but if there's any objections, let me know, and we'll decide if we want to hold it off or move forward.
I'm just going to have one more question here.
Yes.
Of course, the full-time secondary social studies teacher, will that be eliminate the need for some of the retirees that we brought back to work last year?
Yes.
Yeah, well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Dylan, just one more clarification, on the, the New York State aid, you had said that our aid run was $15.241 million, however, that extra $200,000 was for Universal pre-K. Does that, where does that money go then?
Well, I don't know, the district doesn't operate one, that's...
Right, so, so even if New York is budgeting for it, but it's just not, we're not going to get it.
No, but if, if you chose to do it, the money is there.
Oh, okay, okay.
But either way, it will not be budgeted...
Right.
... in the general fund, it would be in the special aid fund.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure I understand the flow. Thank you.
Okay, so I believe Mike has proposed a motion to move forward on adopting a $47,133,657 thousand.
Heather's definitely...
And we have a second by Heather. Do you move on that? Is there any other discussion?
I think I just had an additional comment, because the items that are in the presentation tonight, I wanted the public to understand, we're not taking this lightly. We knew what the cost drivers were, we knew what the proposal for administration as far as the positions they were looking for. What we didn't have were these aid runs that came in recently. So my question to Mr. Gottlieb, just so I'm clear before I cast my vote, was the aid run, the aid report for Highland schools favorable or unfavorable?
I would say it was favorable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, proposed, so carried.
Great, thank you.
Again, like our superintendent mentioned earlier, I want to thank the entire administrative team for working on this budget, and thank Dr. Gottlieb for presenting it to us this evening, and hopefully you can move this thing forward with the voters on the way through. Thank you. Okay, moving, moving along, acceptance of reports. Four meeting minutes from March 2nd, 2021, March 10th, 2021, March 18th, 2021, our claim audit report, March 2021. Send the motion, please. Question by Mike, second by Neil. Discussion? All in favor? opposed? So carried.
Personnel. Anyone have an issue taking personnel as a block from A through I? And we have some recognition this evening. We're good with that? Can I have a motion to move it? Move by Heather, second by Tom. Discussion.
Good job. It looks like you guys have been busy.
Yes, thank you. Team effort.
Yes. No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.
Yes, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge we did have a few new retirements. So I just wanted to again thank Joe Williams and John Valentino for all their service to the district. We wish them all the best in their retirement. We do have here today, of course, you know, Mrs. Coburn is here. She's been with us for a long time and she's now stepping up as our interim principal. I do want to congratulate her and thank her for all her hard work. Also, the middle school, I'll let him introduce himself. If you can stand up, Nick, if you could introduce yourself, maybe come up to the microphone at the podium.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. And my name is Nick Gillis. I'm the interim principal at the middle school. And I'm really excited to continue the work. I've been in two days. And I get to see the second cohort tomorrow, so I'm really excited to meet those students as well. Great day, first day in cafeteria yesterday, greeting everybody. And today I had an opportunity to visit with the virtual staff who weren't able to be in, so I set the Zoom call with them. I was able to have a little bit of conversation with them and get to know them a little bit as well. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm really excited to be here. Thank you.
And then we have Boaz here, right? Let's just stand up and let him just introduce himself.
Thank you guys for the opportunity. I really appreciate it and look forward to continuing working with the middle school, staff, being staff.
Great, thank you. And I think that's everyone, one of our new hires, right? Yes?
Yes, and again, just to echo the comments from the superintendent, we want to thank our retirees for all their valued years here in the Highland Central School District and the devotion to both the students, especially the students and the staff, and to the community of Highland Central School District. And to our new hires, wish them all the best of luck. This is, I believe, this is a great school district to work for and we hope that you succeed here and can remain as a member of the Highland Central School District. So thank you. All right, student reps, I believe Jake, you're in Ferris here, right?
I'm in Ferris.
Jake, did you have anything?
I have an update from the middle school. I have just been found out. Is it on?
Yes.
Fifteen students have transferred over from fully remote to in-person hybrid to be independent for the four-day in-school. And they will be adapting for the rest of the year a new math to try, which will be promoted from now until the end of the year to see if they enjoy it better for next year's classes.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Jake? Thank you, Jake. Under business and operations, we have a budget transfer. We have resolved the Board of Education upon a recommendation of the superintendent to approve the following budget transfer for the 2020-2021 school year as presented to the board at this meeting. Budget transfer is $6,972 for $15,000 to cover O and M hotspot fees through year end. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Heather. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Our Assistant Superintendent Sarah.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. It's good to be here in person. Certainly, the last several weeks, we have spent tremendous amount of time getting our buildings and our schedules and everything ready for our students to come in in person four days a week, starting next Monday. Certainly, a huge thank you to our custodial staff, our main office staff, our guidance staff, all of those for doing all the work that needs to be done to get all of that ready. They really spent a lot of time last week when our students were home getting things organized. So thank you very much for all of that. Looks like we should be set and ready to go next Monday. We're really excited to see our students together in the building four days a week. So thank you for everyone for that. And then I wanted to give you a quick update on our committee for diversity, inclusion, and racial equity in Highland schools. We had a meeting at the end of March, our meeting's on the fourth Tuesday of the month. And during that meeting, we broke into four subcommittees. There's school climate, professional development, staff diversity, and curriculum. Those subcommittees have been meeting at least once in between our larger committee meetings. Some of them are meeting in the upper half. So those subcommittees are just getting started, but our plan is to have them present to the board, possibly at our June 8th meeting, with just an overview of the work that they've done so far this year and one or two action steps that they plan to take going into September. So we'll be giving you an update of the work for the year as well as work that we will be doing moving into next school year. And Dr. LeBlanc was in the district today. He met with our new interim principal at the middle school as well as with several teachers to talk about very specific lesson plans and to look at curriculum. And then we have a plan when he's in district, the 22nd, it will be a day that students are in session. So he's going to spend the day at the middle school, it sounds like, meeting with student focus groups as well as meeting with all of the teachers to give the middle school teachers an update of what's been happening with the committee, the feedback that he's somebody seeing from students. He did that same work at the high school at the end of last month. So we're keeping the staff in the loop about what work is being done with the committee and the feedback that he's receiving from students. And in addition to that, I just want to note that we will be giving a report on the school climate survey that we did, the Panorama survey that we did in February. I will have information on that for you at our next board meeting on April 21st. So that's why I'm on that.
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions for Assistant Superintendent?
Sarah, would we be getting any reports on benchmarks at all before the end of the year?
Yes, we can be back. I can have Karen put something there later.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think you would ask something.
Yeah, right. Yeah, we'll do that for our second.
As for the inclusion committee, are we getting good participation for the membership?
Yeah, absolutely. There have been very few meetings that, there's one person I can miss it from. We have had one member just before break let Tom and I know that we're helpers, which you're not going to be able to participate.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Other than that, no, it's been very, very well attended, really good discussion. From what I understand and looking at the minutes from the subcommittee meetings, I'm on the staff diversity and hiring committee, but I've been also attending a couple of the others on invitation and they've been having great participation.
All right, because it was important for the board that all viewpoints and perspectives were represented in those conversations. So thank you so much.
Yes, and truthfully, I would give a special thank you to the two students who are on the committee. They've been very forthcoming in there and what they share with the committee as well. So I think that's been great insight for us.
Thank you.
So, Mr. President, and Board of Ed, and public, I know that Mrs. Delamick already talked about the reopening and just want to reiterate that certainly we are looking forward to having our students back here four days a week. Again, with the anticipation that hopefully in September, we'll be back to a five-day week schedule. That is my hope. I know that if I leave anything out, again, Mr. Alfonso here, but just an update on our sports, our teams are all, have been playing. Again, these are shorter seasons, so really, you know, this season wraps up next week because then the spring season begins on the 19th. I do have a Section 9 Executive Committee meeting on Monday where they will be voting on, you know, expanding those, that outdoor capacity for spectators and possibly allowing visiting spectators. So that will be voted on, so we'll know. But that wouldn't take effect until the April 19th, the spring season. So the weather looks good. We really, you know, we've been doing well and it's great to see the students out there and participating. I know that Dr. Gottlieb did mention a little, you know, a number of the items and we talked about the signage, but just a few more items as far as the support services committee. The ceiling in the administrative offices was completed, as we said, over the spring break. It does look very nice. They did a good job. They were neat. They were clean. It was very professionally done, so we're very happy with the fix they did on that. We do have a meeting scheduled for either next Tuesday or Thursday. We'll have to finalize that with CS Arch to, with their just library design team. So we can have an initial meeting. So as soon as that's a set time, I'll let the committee know. And we already talked about the canopy. And the, uh, did I, let me jump to Mr. Alfonso. Did I leave anything else out about sports?
I think we're good. I think the biggest thing was about the spectators, which will be addressed at the Section 9 meeting. You know, we are registering kids to family ID right now for the spring. Some of the teams are, numbers are low, especially at the modified level. But we're going to let, give them an opportunity to sign up until next week and then we'll make a decision, you know, how we move forward with our teams.
Great. And that's really all I have. In a little, just in a few moments, I'll be talking about the school calendar. And just a reminder, we don't necessarily have to adopt the calendar tonight, but if you, you know, similar to, if you're satisfied with the calendar, we can. If not, we can push it to the next meeting. That's fine. That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Any questions for the superintendent? I do. Mr. Bon Jovi, is Mr. Alfonso a part of the support services committee?
He is not a member of the support services committee, but I know is consulted on an as-needed basis.
All right, because it just seems with all this work, yes, it's going on on the inside of the building, but there's a lot of impact on the outside of the building and athletic fields and events and things like that. But as long as he's invited in on matters that affect athletics, I think that's important.
Okay, I'll make sure that that happens.
Just to add to that, Mike, I know when we talked about the $8 million design and there was, you know, several amount of conversation and I think our athletic director was involved in that too, is moving that existing tennis court into a turf field for practices and such. And I think that's been beneficial and that really worked well during this pandemic that we were able to get the student athletes out there, even when it was cold, though there was no snow on the ground, they were able to participate in practice on a field that was safe and able to, you know, reset those practices. And then with the implementation of the new lighting, it makes practices go a little longer. I think it's going to work well in the future.
Quite frankly, that little patch of turf has been a saving grace to our athletic teams because in this late spring, right, we got a couple, you know, real cold evenings, some precipitation there towards the end, and we know how wet it does get back there. So it's been a saving grace. And there are some folks approaching me, looking at districts of similar size, specifically Rondow that has completed their turf field, but is still working on their athletic area. I know that the community is getting ideas and sees a value of that turf. And I think that at some point in the future, we'll have that discussion ahead of us. But I do appreciate that patch, but my sons are playing football, so they're on it. I'm sure many of the teams have been on it and it has been a saving grace and we should talk about its expansion.
Thank you, Greg. Anything else for any comments from the superintendent? Okay, under Board of Education, new business. Ulster County BOC's proposed budget for the 2122 school year. That will be our, it's a annual meeting on April 8th via Zoom. It's tomorrow evening, so if you want to listen in, you can, I believe Lisa sent the link to Zoom in on that being the Ulster County Administrative Budget Vote and the Ulster County Board of Education candidate will take place on April 21st, 2021. And that's our next scheduled school board meeting. District calendar.
All right, so if you, each board member is giving a draft copy of the district calendar. Just a reminder to the board and to the public how the district calendar is developed. So really, we have to wait for BOCs, so BOCs really drives the calendar. So BOCs first sets their calendar and then they send that out to the component districts. And though component districts do change it slightly because depending on the culture of a district, you know, certain days are kind of designated as days off or half-days. But in general, you're trying to stick as close as possible to the BOCs so that, you know, it aligns with those students attending BOCs. So it, every, all the numbers are tied. We do work with both HTA and HSA. We meet with them, so they have input into this calendar. There are, as always, there's 184 student days and 191 teacher days, which means you have seven snow days then. There are five superintendent conference days booked to this calendar. It's as you can see, starting in September. I actually like, I like it a lot when it falls like this. It all depends on just how the calendar falls. So we'll have our two superintendent conference days on September 1st and 2nd. That's the Wednesday and Thursday before Labor Day weekend. So that then, you know, teachers who want to kind of have one last nice long weekend can do so. Others will be, I'm sure a lot of people will be in Friday getting their rooms ready. That is not mandatory, but I know a lot of people do that. That way, on Tuesday, the 7th, you get rolling, bam, school has started, students are in. We have then, the 16th is off for Yon Kapor. Then in October, we have the fall break on October 11th. So I wanted to address this, not just with the board, but with the public. So due of a statement, I want to make sure I worded it correctly. So as always, the Highland Central School District, the administration, our Board of Education, we share a responsibility to provide leadership that results in policies and practices that institutionalize inclusiveness in our schools. It is not easy work, but it is very important work. Last year, as you remember, the district formed the Climate, Culture, and Racial Equity Committee, whose efforts have been focused on listening, learning, seeking ways to create an environment that feels safe and welcoming to all students. Throughout this process, students and families have shared their feelings about the celebration of Columbus Day. If we wish to demonstrate our commitment to diversity and inclusion, we cannot ignore what has been shared with us. On the same hand, we also do not wish for others who celebrate their connection to their heritage through this federal holiday to feel disregarded. We talk about creating a culture where all students feel that they're valued members of our school community. We always talk about, you hear me on my messages, we talk about being a pack, about sticking together and supporting one another. To do so, I have decided, and we have decided, I presented the board, to continue to hold the Monday typically celebrated as Columbus Day as a day off, but also. the Monday typically celebrated as Columbus Day as a day off, but also change it on the school calendar only to fall holiday in which each of our families can celebrate the manner that is most meaningful to them. So that is the explanation of what fall break is on October 11th. In November, you have a split R during a superintendent's conference day, a fall day, that's election day, so November 2nd, so there will be students in school on election day. Then you have Veterans Day on the 11th. We have a half AM parent-teacher conference, as the tradition will do, on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Then you have, of course, Thanksgiving and then the Friday after Thanksgiving. In December, you have on the 6th, Monday the 6th, a half AM students, students only, and then a PM staff development day. Then your winter holiday, you go right up to the 23rd. And then, because Friday is the 24th, and then it's really just the next week, we come right back to school on January 3rd. January 17th is Martin Luther King Holiday, and then there's your Regent's Week, that's set by the state, and then we have a half AM student and then a staff, PM staff development day on the 31st. In February, it's just the President's Day, Monday the 21st this year is the day off. In March, you have a, again, half AM parent-teacher conferences. On the 25th, you have another one of our full superintendent conference days. Next year, the spring holiday is a little later, so it's the 11th to the 15th is the spring holiday. Then on May 6th, we have our traditional superintendent conference day, and we usually do our kindergarten registration. We take care of that on that day. Then you have Memorial Day on the 30th. And then they, you have the state holiday on, it's celebrated next year on Monday the 20th, that is Juneteenth, which actually falls on the 19th. And again, just in case not everyone on, on the board and that's, or necessarily the public's not sure, Juneteenth, it's a holiday celebrating the emancipation of those who have been enslaved in the United States. It is commemorated on the anniversary date of June 19th, 1865 announcement by Union Army General Gordon Granger proclaiming freedom from slavery in Texas. So Juneteenth is a state holiday. Whenever a holiday falls on a Sunday, then it's celebrated on the Monday. So that will be, so then the following year, that will be on, it'll probably, most likely fall on Monday. So that is a, so there'll be no Regent's Exams, all schools in the state are closed on the 20th. So that gives us our calendar. Both unions have signed off on it. It meets the number of days. It has the normal number of snow days. We don't know next year about snow days, now that I mentioned it. We're not sure what the governor's going to do as far as allowing remote days to be done, snow days. Now it's done with an executive order this year, so we'll see what happens. Any questions about the draft calendar for 21-22?
Yeah. Actually, overtime, we have overtime moved toward Washington and Abraham Lincoln in name for our holiday scheduling and combined them into a President's Day holiday for a long weekend. I'm now considering removing Christopher Columbus from Fall quarter rest here this school year and renaming it Fall Break. I understand this is an opportunity to set an example and possibly lead other districts in this same direction. Can we guarantee that these people will still be a relevant part of our history as taught in our schools? While we're at it, why don't we make a statement that, you know, seems like we're just taking the wrong personality out of all of us. Can we guarantee that these peoples, yes, while we're at it, why don't we make a statement for these districts? We'll be removing all personal names from, from our school district calendar, holiday slash time off, and replace them with a generic or seasonal themed designation. This is getting out of control. Where does it stop? All these individuals should be celebrated and talked about regarding their place and time in our history and not canceled or minimized. When that happens, the history, good and not so good, is lost and eventually forgotten. So I understand the direction, believe me in on this. I'm just one voice, but I felt it necessary to raise those concerns.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Is the board ready to move forward on adopting our school calendar this evening or do you want to hold it for next meeting? Move forward? Okay, can I have a motion to accept or adopt our school calendar for the 2021-22 school year? Motion by Adam, seconded by Camille. Discussion. All of the favor? Opposed? So carry. Under old business, just the FYI, school board candidates nominating petitions are available at Central Office between the hours at 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, except for April 19th, or, I'm sorry. They're available, they have to be returned by April 19th to 5:00 PM. Okay, with Miss Elaine, anything? For the good welfare of the district, I know Lisa Senigui is going to read a letter that we've got from Music Boosters Association. Lisa, can you read that?
Sure. Hopefully, everybody can hear me. This is from the president of the Highland Music Boosters, Frances Wu. Dear Presidents Barone and members of the Highland Central School District Board of Education, I just wanted to share some activity of interest that occurred mid-March, only for lack of time, we haven't had a chance to announce it. Last month, the Highland Music Boosters presented 20 USB microphones to Dan Shouts and Erin Bradley at the high school. It is much needed support to facilitate recording student performances for upcoming school district virtual concerts and musical presentations. The supply will be managed by the music department and loaned to students, allowing for higher quality and standardization of recording and post-production for district activities. We also thank Jacobs Music Center in Highland for facilitating and discounting appurges of the microphones. Separately, this March, we offered our annual recognition award application, expanded this year to support more students. Results will be announced later this month. Ordinarily Frances Wu, President Highland Music Boosters Club. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy.
I'd certainly like to thank Mrs. Wu and all the members of the Highland Music Boosters, and we'll make sure, of course, as always, at the next board meeting, that we'll officially accept the donation.
Yes. Again, thank you to the Music Boosters Association. They're a real supporter of the district and what the district is trying to move forward with, the music department, and they're a big asset to that program. So again, thank you to the Music Boosters Association. Does anyone else have anything for the good welfare of the district? Okay. It's good to have everyone back in person and hopefully, as we move forward, we can continue this type of format for our board meetings. That being said, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Tom, seconded by Camille. All of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.